This meeting of the yeas and city council now come to order and the chair calls on Assistant City Clerk Denny Savers for the roll call.
Councilman Harris.
Here.
Councilman Williams.
Here.
Councilman Avery.
Here.
President Eccles.
Here.
Councilman Stewart.
Here.
Councilman Cannon.
Here.
Councilman Reed.
Here.
We have a quorum present, the meeting is open for business. Reverend Willie Simmons will be bringing our invocation this morning, please stand for our invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Father, we do thank you for the opportunity and the blessed privilege of carrying out the business of this community in this city. Your word says, "If any man lack wisdom, let him ask." Father, we ask you for wisdom to be upon our city officials, our mayor, Lord, our councilmen, Lord, all the heads of our community, Lord, that they would exercise the government of this city for the upbuilding and the establishment of your kingdom, your kingdom order and your kingdom way, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with every legal justice for all.
The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the Public Works Committee meeting, work session, and city council meeting held on April 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of the accounts for the week of March the 29th through April the 4th.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
I don't know what the mayor's problem is, but our city clerk has laryngitis and she can't talk, so she had to let the assistant take her place today.
Maybe the mayor got laryngitis.
I don't know. I think the mayor's gone to Montgomery on city business, really.
I think Ava's voice has been coming and going on command this morning, so I don't know.
We've got two proclamations today. Is Pat Hill here today? Pat Hill? Come on up, Pat. Pat is the chairperson of the RSVP Advisory Council. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central to how we meet our challenges, and whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs, and whereas RSVP volunteers address the most pressing challenges facing our cities and nation, from educating students for the jobs of the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable, resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve, and whereas in one year, 400 RSVP volunteers served 55,000 hours in more than 50 agencies and organizations bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economic and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas RSVP volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an investment commitment to, an intensive commitment to service, a commitment that remains with them in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens, improve lives, and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 9, 2013. Now therefore, be it resolved that Sherman Gaiten, Mayor of Gadsden, does hereby proclaim April 9, 2013 as National Service Recognition Day, and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to their communities.
I just wanted to say, on behalf of Tracy, the director, and the RSVP staff and volunteers, that were it not for your support, they could not do what they accomplish.
And Tracy, she's talking about, Tracy Pondick is the director, she does a great Whereas once thought to be a rare disease, sarcoidosis is now known to affect people of all ages, races, and genders. And whereas sarcoidosis is an inflammatory disease that can affect almost any organ in the body, and causes heightened immunity, a condition that results in overreaction of the immune system resulting in damage to the body's own tissues. And whereas the classic feature of sarcoidosis is the formation of granulomas, microscopic clumps of inflammatory cells that group together interfering with organ function. And whereas in the United States, sarcoidosis most commonly targets the lungs and lymph nodes, but can also affect the skin, eyes, liver, salivary glands, sinuses, kidneys, heart, the muscles and bones, the brain, and nervous system. And whereas through the exact cause of sarcoidosis is not known, current research indicates that in individuals who are genetically susceptible to sarcoidosis, exposure to bacteria, viruses, or chemicals might trigger the disease. And whereas while progress has been made in understanding the symptoms and better diagnosing the disease, there's still much to learn about sarcoidosis. But with increased research, the goal of discovering the cause, improving treatment, and finding a cure are attainable. Now therefore, be it resolved that Sherman Gaiten, Mayor of the city of Gadsden, Alabama, does hereby proclaim the month of April as Sarcoidosis Awareness Month.
I'd like to say I thank the Governor, I mean Mayor, and the councilmen. Sarcoidosis is a rare disease, and it can be fatal. It took the lives of Bernie Mac, NFL star Reggie White, and Michael Duncan Clark, the actor of Green Mile. And not only them, it has taken so many people in the prime of their lives, 40 years old, 50 years old. Tonight, I will attend a memorial service for one of our very own support group members that it took, he was 45 years old. There's no cause, there's no cure. They have worked for 150 years to find what causes it. They do not know what causes, so therefore, they can't cure it. So with this awareness, the more awareness we get out, the more hope we can get that one day there will be a cure. Thank you all very much.
Unfinished business, we have none today. Number nine, this is a time and place as advertised to conduct a public hearing, allowing anyone to speak in opposition to or in favor of a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 213 Springdale Road in District 2, the state of Alabama, City Financial Corporation, LLC, being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, I'm Brian Horverson with the Building Department. We started this case in November of 2011. There have been no improvements to the property, there are no permits to improve. We're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor of it? Brian, does this house qualify for rehab?
With a resolution, we'll crunch the numbers. We have a limit what we can spend based on tax appraisal, and we look at every case.
Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Ten, our next public hearing is a resolution ordering abatement of nuisance on property located at 1119 Sixth Avenue in District 5. Jerry Davis and Maude K. Davis as trustees of the Davis Family Trust, and Richard Davis and Sarah Beth Davis being the last known owners. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Please state your name and address for the city clerk.
My name is Jerry Davis. My address is Starrett, Alabama. Two things. First, there's an open case about this house and its status currently being discussed in the courts. I'd ask time for me to have my day in court about that before y'all make a decision. And my second is depending on your response to that.
We have to hear the rest of the, we don't know what we're talking about.
Well, there's an open case about the status of the house currently in the courts, or trying to get in the courts. I mean, I'll tell you everything about that if that's what you want to hear. I don't know if I'll be able to get any response from the city since their attorney is here and it's an open case.
We're probably not going to get involved with a legal matter. What we would like to hear is from our building department is why they brought this abatement forward. So when we hear that, then we'll know more what we're talking about.
Sir, have you had any conversations with the building department about plans to improve it and bring it up the code and things like that?
Since 2001, I've spent about $25,000 on the house on a couple of different actions. As recent as 2005, I got a sign off from the city on any and all issues that the city had with the house at that time. In 2006, I sold the house to a couple with a land sale contract containing a start and a stop date for payments, containing an amortization schedule, containing an interest rate on that with a down payment. I collected that payment for roughly three and a half years, four years. On a Thursday afternoon, those folks living in the house and the owners of the house came to the city to get a permit to put a metal roof on the house along with family members. It's my understanding they didn't need a permit to do that. Friday morning, bright and early, the city showed up down there, scared these folks to death. They were immigrants. They were threatened with being deported, they were threatened with ICE. I'm not exactly sure who all showed up, but it's been my experience, the building department didn't show up on its own.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I don't know if we need to hear all that now.
It's not, I don't know what it has to do with exactly what we're here for.
Well, what it has to do with is that's the foundation for the lawsuit that I have with the city.
I understand.
For basically interfering with the contractual agreement.
Okay, I understand that. I just don't think we need to hear the lawsuit here.
That's not the lawsuit.
Well, I mean, that's the premises of why you're trying to bring a lawsuit, am I correct?
No, sir. You asked me what led to this issue with the city. The only thing I've said about the premise of the lawsuit is that it is concerning the interference with the contractual agreement.
Okay, all right, you've said that, so.
Yeah. Back up about a half a paragraph, and I've spent $15,000 to $20,000 on this house over the years trying to appease the city. Evidently, I have not been able to do that. If the council chooses to tear this house down, then I suggest that it would only be fair to write me a check or you should have torn the house down 10, 15 years ago. That house has not deteriorated that much. It was being lived in, albeit maybe not in the conditions that somebody else would like, but it was a fine house for those folks. They were in the process of putting a metal roof on it, and were stopped halfway in the middle of it for little or no reason. So I'll end my remarks and ask for permission to speak during your discussion period if I would like to.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to it? Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of it?
Mr. President, we started this case in February of 2010. There was a roofing permit issued at that time. There have been no other improvements to the property, there are no active permits to improve, and we're asking today for a resolution to abate this nuisance. I have a question for Brian.
Okay.
Brian, just looking at that, is that the roof falling, I know it's the ceiling falling in, did they not put a new roof on it? You said that they got a permit. Roof was partially completed, and then the job was just abandoned. And that's the damage you see from the leaking roof.
There was a suggestion or accusation that the city stopped the work on the roof. Was there some reason for the city to do that, or did the city do that?
No, we did not issue stop work order, other than the fact I didn't have a permit, and then they did come get it from me.
I couldn't imagine why the city would want us to make a stop there. Our decision as the council people is to assess, is there a nuisance there? And if there is a nuisance, then whether to abate it or not, that's a decision that we'll have to make.
Will this, Brian, will this be one of those houses you will evaluate as far as, as far as demolition as opposed to rehabbing, or what we could do? Okay.
Okay.
You little lady, I'm going to speak again.
Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
Is there any discussion?
When we get to the discussion, we'll. Do you want to make a motion?
Make a motion, we abate.
Okay.
Second.
Now we're going for discussion.
Is there any discussion?
Mr. President, I have a time line. I'd like to yield the floor for three minutes to the gentleman for discussion.
I'd just like to correct one thing. There was a permit pulled for this work on a Thursday, and it was a Friday morning that the city showed up. There was a permit, and if I'm not mistaken from what I've been able to read, there was not a permit required for the work anyway. And we've had numerous issues over the years with this house that I have yet to been able to determine exactly where the target for satisfaction is. And I would ask perhaps that the council use perhaps that as a part of your decision-making process.
Sir, may I ask, when you said this house was habitable for those people, what would it take to put this house into a habitable position now?
I'm really not sure, Councilman. It's in rough shape. These folks were threatened and basically thrown out of the house the day they were doing the work on Friday morning trying to complete the roof. As they are the owners of the house, I saw no reason to go in and try to finish the work to mitigate any damages. It's not my responsibility to. I tried my darndest to figure out what was going on at the time this happened. I got very little, if any, cooperation from the city in trying to determine who the owner was, what happened, and when it happened, again, without getting into specifics.
If you'll stick around after the council meeting, I'll hear you.
Be fine.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it not be known by saying aye. Those opposed?
Abstained.
We have one abstention, the motion carries to approve.
Number 11, our next public hearing is a resolution disapproving issuance of an alcoholic beverage license for shortcut food located at 800 South 11th Street in District 5. Susan Shabana has applied for an all-premises-only retail beer license. The zoning administrator disapproved the license because the location does not qualify under the city ordinance. The address is zone R2, multiple-family residential district and convenience stores and other retail establishments that are not allowed in residential districts. This business was established at the time the ordinance was adopted. However, there was never an alcoholic-licensed beverage issued under the establishment name of the owner's name. Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this resolution? Please state your name and address for the city clerk.
Luther Abel, attorney for the Shabani's, 408 South Horse Street here at Gadsden.
Okay, you're on.
Mr. and Ms. Shabani have had this store.
Almost 20 years now.
20 years, and three years ago, y'all had beer there?
Yes. The store has been existed almost 50 years, and it's grandfathered even when the city adopted the rezoning. We had the beer and wine three years ago. It was appealed to the Supreme Court of Alabama, and at the time, I wasn't here, I was out of the country, and I couldn't defend myself. But we did have beer and wine up to three years ago. We also have a license for daily. So as I said, the store has been existed for almost 55 years. As a matter of fact, Mr. Abel, he can tell you, he was the first customer when he bought the beer 50 years ago.
Yeah, I was younger when I bought that beer. But the Shabani's are willing to do some improvements to the store, put some new coolers and stuff in, and of course, being able to pay for that, being able to sell wine and the beer.
And we have over 2,000 signatures from all the surrounding neighborhood, and a bunch of old folkses, that they really not able to drive up there, they would like to have a beer and wine in that location. Now, we've been there for 20 some years, and everybody knows us, and they really like to see the beer in that store.
I think Mr. Shabani's already submitted about 1,500 signatures with his application a year or so ago, and then.
And we have 500 new ones.
I think in my office that I could submit, if y'all need to see those. But they would like to try to get the beer and the wine there, there doesn't seem to be that much community opposition to it.
There is no church there, there is no school there, there is nothing to stop the store from having the beer and wine. As I said, the store has existed 50 some years, and it's grandfathered even before the city adopted a new resolution about rezoning the area.
I think the closest beer store would be South Gadsden, the Dollar Store, and then you go the other way and probably Johnson's Giant Foods. So there does appear to be a need for a beverage there in that location.
I would really appreciate, I know y'all have been opposed to that before because of the school being there, but the school is not there no longer, and there is no church or nothing to stop the store from having the beer and wine. So I appreciate that you consider your decision, and maybe this time be in favor of hopefully.
Like you reconsider, sir.
Thank you.
You want to comment on that?
Yes, that's in my district. I have had quite a few of the neighbors opposed to having, selling alcohol out of that store. But that's not the situation we have here, is they're in a R2, which is not allowed in our zoning, so that's not, it's not allowed. I understand that they did have beer there at one time, but I think the ABC Board pulled that license because they were selling to minors. I believe it's a story that I heard, may not be true. Why did they pull your license? Why did they pull your license?
Well, as I said, ABC appealed that to the Supreme Court of Alabama, and I wasn't here, and my lawyer, Bill Hudson, at that time was retired. So nobody was there to defend us, and for not being there, they pulled the license.
Yeah, the question I asked was, why did they pull the license?
Um.
Don't know. Yeah, I think I know. Anyway, this is, it's in a R2, and your store is grandfathered in there since it's been there so long.
Yes, sir.
But you can't, under our ordinance, you can't have a beer license there. It's in a R2.
Well, I mean, I have.
So we have really no choice but to pass this resolution to deny it, as far as I'm concerned.
So we also have the license, city license, county, state also have a daily license, and I don't understand why the beer would make any difference. It's just convenience to the customer and the neighborhood, you know?
If I understand this correctly, and you're in a R2, you're in a neighborhood, there is no stores around there, you're in a neighborhood, an R2, and you can't sell beer there?
Well, I understand the R2, but as I said, this store is grandfathered, you know?
Well, you lost your grandfather when you lost your license, when you lost your beer license, you lost that grandfather clause in the license.
I'm not sure about that, I'll have to check that.
Denny? Okay.
Well, we've been to court, court of the appeal and court of civil, and both, you know, they were in our favor, and they give us the license. And we had the license, as I said, for almost a year, and then the agency decided to go against that, and appeal to the Supreme Court of Alabama, and at that time, my lawyer was retired, and I was out of the country.
I don't think we have any choice to deny this, so I'll call for the question.
Okay.
Or I make a motion that we approve this denial, really.
Second.
Okay. Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution which denies the license, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Abstained. We have one no, we have one abstention, the motion carries to deny the license.
Okay, number 12 is a resolution authorizing grant application for transportation enhancement funds from the Alabama Department of Transportation. Chair will entertain a motion to adopt. funds from the Alabama Department of Transportation. Chair will entertain the motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, do you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Okay. New businesses, are there any new businesses?
Yes, Mr. President, I have a, a resolution I'd like to ask unanimous consent to consider this morning. It's a resolution awarding bid thirty-two thirty-two to Xerox for copy, lease, and supplies and services.
Second.
Clerk, do you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution is new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Permission is granted.
Now, last by passage, please.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
This is, uh, like, like I said, the, uh, leasing, copying machine and supplies from Xerox for a little four thousand dollars a month.
Any other discussion? Clerk, do you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Any other new business? Don't you start, Billy, and just go down the line.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, I have two resolutions I would like to ask unanimous to consider today. The first, uh, is a resolution authorizing license agreement with the chamber for the use of public park property for River Fest, which is from May thirty-first to June second.
Second. Clerk, do you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the item as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, this is, uh, this is an agreement with the, the Chamber, the, the Chamber of Gaston, Edgeworth County, for use of public property in connection with River Fest, uh, which will be down here, uh, on the river, May thirty-first to June second.
Any other discussion? Clerk, do you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
And the second is a resolution authorizing adoption of Title VI plan update to ensure compliance with, uh, Title VI of the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four to ensure that the level of quality, quality of transportation services provided without regard to race color or national origin.
Second.
All those in favor to consider the item as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President, this is, this is the update for adopting Title VI plan, which states that the, the agency receiving financial assistance from the Federal Transit Administration are required to comply with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act nineteen sixty-four, and the city of Gaston is a recipient of such funds from the Federal Transit Administration, and the city of Gaston continues to be committed to the principles that prohibit discrimination in any of its programs and activities.
Any other? Clerk, take the vote.
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Mr. President, I have a couple of items, uh, the first of which is a resolution awarding bid request thirty-two thirty-five to TDR Construction for renovations, renovations to the Weaver School Building. I ask that we consider that today.
Second. Clerk, do you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the item as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Permission is granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. As we've discussed, uh, in the past, uh, there, there are plans to renovate the Weaver School Building, uh, and to move municipal court there, as well as create a, a police precinct location for the city. Um, so, um, once this bid, once this bid has been awarded, uh, six to eight weeks out approximately, uh, the, uh, the, the project should begin with, uh, generally speaking, a hundred and twenty-day calendar day, um, uh, project, um, scope or, or project timeline. Uh, and obviously, you know, that, that, that can be fluid relative to weather and, and, and other things that may serve to interrupt. But, uh, but generally speaking, about a hundred and twenty calendar days, uh, from, from the, from the inception date.
This is, this school is in East, just off of where you turn to go to two seventy-eight.
I said about Litchfield.
Right behind Litchfield.
Any other discussion? Clerk, do you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
Second item of new business that I have is a resolution adopting analysis of impediments to fair housing choice. Uh, I ask that we consider that today.
Second. Clerk, do you take the vote?
All those in favor to consider the item as new business today, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President. There's, there's actually a public hearing, uh, on tomorrow, um, that the Community Development Department will be facilitating, um, to discuss both this and some other items as relates to our CDBG budget and, and our community development activities. Um, you know, just in, in quick summary, the, the impediments to fair housing as relates to this report have been identified as education, affordability, and historic isolation. So, um, I think it's important, especially now with the, uh, with the state of our housing situation, that we understand, um, you know, what some of the impediments to fair housing might be, uh, in the city. I can tell you that, uh, you know, years, years ago, um, that I felt prey, uh, not in the city of Gaston, thank goodness, but I felt prey to some level of, uh, what, what the fair, what the, the, what, um, the, uh, what was commonly referred to as steering, uh, where, um, where as a minority, I was steered away from a, uh, a, 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 a non-minority community. Uh, and so it's, you know, these are, these are items that really need to be kept on the forefront and really need to be addressed, uh, relative to our, our, our fair housing assessment. And, uh, we as a city have an obligation, and I'm, I'm excited about us doing, conducting this assessment and identifying what we believe to be our major impediments, so.
Is there any other discussion? Clerk, do you take the vote?
All those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries to adopt.
You have anything, Rob?
No.
Ben?
What?
You have anything?
Oh, any comments?
No, no.
Anything to bring up?
Anything to bring up?
New business.
New business.
No, sir, I absolutely do.
He refused.
Okay.
I was busy tending to my laryngitis.
Apartments reports. Recreation.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just wanted, we have an event this weekend I wanted to promote here today. Uh, it's April twelfth and thirteenth, that'll be Friday and Saturday. April eleventh, the rain's gonna come in and clear out the pollen, and then April twelfth and thirteenth, we're gonna pollute there with barbecue. So, this weekend, we have Smoke on the Falls, Knockaloo Barbecue Festival on April twelfth and thirteenth. On Friday, the gates open at five o'clock, and then we will, uh, close down at nine P.M. That's five o'clock P.M. to nine P.M. on Friday night. It's free on Friday night, that's something that we hadn't done before. So, there's no excuse for us not having a bigger crowd on Friday night. We've tried a little everything, so we're gonna, we're gonna let you come in free Friday night. We've got some folks that'll be performing on stage Friday night starting at six o'clock, and they will perform to nine o'clock. It's, uh, it's open mic night, but we've got it all lined up as, uh, with folks that just wanna get up and play music. So, it ought to be a, a night of fun, so bring you cushions and coolers on Friday night. Uh, on Saturday, uh, the gates open at, well, before the, before we have the barbecue on Saturday for some of you runners on the council, uh, we have our five K Smoke Your Buns Run that's sponsored by McClellan Chiropractor. So, you can come run through the trails now, and then maybe you go down there and give them some money and get your back worked on, 'cause it's a pretty rough, it's a pretty rough course, but not, but not too rough. Everybody enjoyed it. Last year, I think we had a hundred and fifty in our first run. This year, we already have a hundred and seventy-five, and there's usually about twenty-five or thirty that will sign up the morning of the race. And the race will begin at eight P.M. behind the Wedding Chapel, and it will end behind the Wedding Chapel as well, and it should, uh, should take about an hour for the, for the run. And then we'll do the awards for the run over on the main stage at the barbecue. The run starts on, on the Wedding Chapel side and goes through, uh, down the first phase of Black Creek Trail, and then it, uh, comes back around and enters into the park, and goes through the park and look, through the Pioneer Village, Petting Zoo, and then comes back out through the barbecue competitors, and then back over to the finish line.
That ain't what you said.
Hey, Kerry, you might have, you might have, go back, you said P.M.
Eight A.M. on the run.
Yeah, but that ain't what you said, though. You said it starts at the Wedding Chapel and it ends at the Wedding Chapel.
That's right.
I thought I'd just come to the Wedding Chapel, just stay right there. But now I gotta go somewhere and get some cups. No, I don't want to get in that one.
We'll, we'll actually let you pay your thirty dollars and stand right there if you'd like to.
That's what I, that's what I thought it was.
And after the, after the run, then, uh, you can come to the barbecue festival, and every, and let me make this clear, too. For the folks that enter the run, you get in the barbecue festival, uh, for the, for the price of entering the five K run. But the, uh, those of you that do not run, on Saturday, you'll have to pay ten dollars to get in at the gate for ages thirteen and up, and it's five dollars for ages four to twelve, and it's free three and under. And what you get for your price, you get a free round of mini golf, free barbecue sandwich, you get, the kids get to enjoy the Jack's Kids Fun Zone. Uh, Gaston Library is gonna be doing a story time in an area there from eleven to one fifteen in the park. Also, you get into the park, the train ride, and then you get to enjoy the, the live music that we have on Saturday, uh, on the State Farm Music Stage. At eleven-thirty, we have the Leverton Brothers that'll be playing from eleven-thirty to one-thirty, and at two o'clock, from two to four, we have Reckless that'll be playing. Then at four o'clock, we do our award ceremony where we give out over ten thousand dollars in prize money. Now, we started this, I can't believe it's been five years since I came before you and told you about our first one. At twenty-eight teams the first year in the competition. This year, as I speak right now, we've got seventy-seven. And so, actually, we've, we're at the max capacity for the area that we're doing this in. So, next year, we're looking at a way to move it to the campground area where we can accommodate more competitors, 'cause we've turned probably ten backyarders away this year already, and then we've still, we've got one or two places, I think, left for some professionals, 'cause the professionals, they pay more to get in it. They, they had, they pay three hundred dollars entry fee, they have to cook four meats, backyarders pay a hundred and fifty, they cook two meats, but you get more prize money if you enter the professional division. So, uh, we're just looking, looking forward to it. We've got some great sponsors this year, and, uh, we think the weather's gonna be good for Friday and Saturday. So, we invite everyone out and, uh, think it'll be a good time, and we, let me tell you something else we've added this year, too. We try to add something to it, and this year, Southern Sports Group, uh, we do, we're doing three fishing tournaments with them. Well, they've got this fish tank that they wanted to promote fishing at a non-fishing event. So, they're bringing a fish tank up there that'll probably be a twenty by twenty. It'll be stocked with about three to four hundred pound of catfish. Adults and kids will be allowed to fish in it. They have some type of casting contest and several other things that they do to help promote fishing. So, that'll be something else that the kids and adults will, uh, be able to participate in as you're admission into the park, uh, for the barbecue event. So, we just wanna invite everybody out. Thank you.
Thank you. Remarks by the mayor and the council, Ben?
I was thinking I was gonna tell Billy, I'm, I'm not in for the, the one point seven five race, is that in?
I was gonna, Kerry, was that one point seven five miles? Three four one nine, well, being there, let us have our handicap in that race.
Put me down for the fairy tale at the library. I can sit still for about three minutes, that's about it.
The fairy tale?
Yeah. Uh, I did wanna kinda get this out. About fifty-three years ago, our commissioner, Hart Washam, started trying to clean the city up. He tried everything in the world, I believe, Mr. President, uh, from backyard to mosquito bit, the, the going out and picking up litter and so on and so forth. I say that to say this, that's fifty-three years ago. The, uh, Public Safety Committee had a meeting this morning, and we're gonna recommend to the full council probably next week, I think, and it, Billy, or week after next, one of the two, that we go to a new program, uh, that being that we have determined that the fines need to be upped. I checked with our city attorney just a little while ago. We're gonna recommend a five hundred dollar minimum fine, a thousand dollar maximum fine. There, we're talking about litter, and we're talking about noise at the same time. So, that'll be coming forward. And I firmly believe, and I do want feedback from the public, if, if anybody wants to, also want the public to go out and look this town over and see the litter that's strewn all the way through this city, either way you wanna do it. And then listen to the boon boxes and the folks next door making all the noise, and then give me some feedback as to why you think we shouldn't do this. That's my biggie. I determined one thing, Billy has to listen all morning. For fifty-three years, we've made ordinances, we've written them, written them, written them, and the one thing that hadn't been done is enforcement. That's the secret. So, anyway, that will be the recommendation of the Public Safety Committee as of right now, before next week. Thank you.
Johnny?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to read a letter, please, from the Count, uh, Countryman family. Stated April the ninth, two thousand thirteen, Mayor Sherman Gaten, Gaston City Council, Honorable Mayor Gaten, City Councilman, on behalf of the siblings, the J.R. Countryman want to express our appreciation in naming the Highway four eleven project in Gaston in his honor. We know firsthand how buddy was when he was committed himself to something. The efforts he put forth on this project, as well as others he supported, is an example how he felt him been able to serve the city of Gaston. Those of you who worked with him or knew him, knew how he was committed, um, and they always gave his word. He loved what he did, whether it was in the faith of God, hunting, cutting grass, and especially performing his responsibilities as a city of Gaston District Two. Again, thank you. He treasures this work and those he worked for. We will treasure this honor yet bestowed to him. Thank you. Sue Countryman Ellis, Jeanette Countryman McGreev, Kathy Countryman Brown, and Lamar Countryman. I think that was nice of him sending us this letter that they sent to us on behalf of Mr. Countryman. Uh, he was instrumental, along with some other people, in getting this done. I'm glad we went ahead and finally got that ball on the road for Mr. Countryman. I got a call last night from Paulette Chandler. She wanted to welcome everybody tonight to come to Walnut Park Community Church. They're having revival tonight, Tuesday night and Wednesday at six o'clock. That's located at, on Wilson Street in Walnut Park over there. Uh, also wanna tell everyone, Music on Megan's coming, it'll be, not this weekend, but next weekend. It starts at five-thirty. We got two groups lined up, and should be a fun time for everyone. It's also free. That's all I got, Mr. President.
Uh, would you like to mention the, the fact that, uh, our public works is still cleaning up from the storm? I know my street is, uh, really cluttered right now, and the, and the trash pickup is getting, was, they're way behind, but it's because of the storm, and eventually they're gonna get there. They're, they're working a lot, lot overtime trying to get, uh, caught up, so please be patient. Thank you.
Uh, briefly, uh, I, I voted in the neck, well, yeah, I called it a positive to, to grant a license to this particular business. Uh, we, we just gotta change some rules and some regulations, um, and come into the twenty-first century when it come down to, uh, we, we talk about not, uh, following the law and what have you. Right now, it's legal in, in the city of Gaston, Edgeworth County, and state of Alabama to sell alcohol. And I've challenged folk who, who are opposed to the sale of it, uh, to go out and get a petition started and bring it back to me, and I'll be the first person to sign it, if you wanna go dry, 'cause I don't drink, so it doesn't bother me. But it do bother me when people who do, don't have the opportunity to go to their neighborhood store or wherever, to their neighborhood club, because it's located somewhere that somebody don't like. And I, I have a problem with that, and, you know, if you don't like it, then maybe you need to move. But to deny a business person an opportunity to make money, I, I have a major concern about that, and particularly in this city when we're looking at trying to generate revenue so this city can continue to grow and move forward. Um, I, I know there's a problem with some of the people in the community in this particular neighborhood, but again, um, they can go several blocks down, like you said, to buy something and then come back and drink it on their porch, at their house, or wherever. They can go several blocks in the other direction. So, I don't really see a problem that we should not, uh, allow him to, to be able to make a living and sell it there at that particular location. Again, you know, I'm opposed to selling it anywhere, but as long as it's the law, I think we need to be able to sell it anywhere. I'm off my soapbox.
Eric?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, do wanna, um, thank the, uh, the, the Youth Leadership Society on last week, uh, last Thursday, actually. I think Shane and I had the opportunity I think Shane and I had the opportunity to participate in a panel discussion, and I wish, wish the mayor were here so that, so that I could publicly acknowledge the fact that Shane did a very good job representing the mayor's office. So, but it's a very, very good event. I was shaking in my shoes beforehand, wondering what kind of crowd we were gonna draw, but very good turnout. And I have to tell you that we have a very solid group of young leaders in the city who are dialed in, so elected officials, beware. Don't, don't just assume that our young folks, in particular, our young, young adults are not dialed into our issues. They, they are very much, and they ask some very probing questions. So I was, again, I'm very excited to be able to support that event and, and hope to be able to support that group going forward. Also, you, you heard me earlier talk some about our, our analysis to, for, of fair housing impediments. And, and again, that is, that is something that's required of this city by, by the, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. And, and again, I, I have to say that, that I think that, that is very meaningful and needful in that we have to be sure that, that, that those of low and moderate income status, those who are members of minority groups in particular, are not adversely impacted by our housing situation here in the city. So again, this, this assessment helps us in, in ensuring that everyone gets fair access to, to, to good housing situations. And of course, the last thing I wanna do is recognize a number of young people that we have here, and some teachers from Gaston City High School.
Ernestine Kady.
He's gonna do it.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. That's all I have.
You can do it, that's all right. While, since he started it, we'll recognize Ernestine Kady and students from Gaston City High School who are in attendance today. Y'all stand up and let us see you.
Yeah. There we go. Ms. Kady, is this the group that, you wanna talk about it?
It is. Good morning to you all. And we just came out today to take a look at a council meeting prior to coming next week to partake in Youth and Government Day, and these kids are excited about what's going on in the city, and they're preparing ordinances and proclamations for next week. So again, we'd like to thank you all for allowing us to come and sit today.
They always do a good job.
Great job.
They do. We're looking forward to seeing all of you and then some next week. Billy?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a result of the Public Safety Committee meeting we had this morning, we think there was some misunderstanding, there's some, well, there was clarification given as far as ordinances that we have and, and the fact that what we need to do is support the ordinances that we already have on the books, as well as create more that will give the police department the energy and the, and the support they need to enforce the law. As a result of today's meeting, we will get more enforcement of the noise ordinance and the pollution ordinance in the city, because there's now a better understanding of what the process is and how it should be conducted. So stay tuned, you know, i- i- if you're riding down the street, you know, if you're on Payton Road or whatever, Payton Ridge, and you throw a wrapper at the paper, I mean, a wrapper from McDonald's out your window, you just liable to be caught and it'll be a $500 fine. The, I, I think, and that was, Public Works was addressed today also, and we thank Public Works for the job they're doing, and they have told us unequivocally that they are behind, minimum of two weeks behind. But there are still, if there are concerns that you have in your neighborhood concerning Public Works, then by all means, call and, and request, an audience or request someone listen to you about the problem that you are experiencing in your neighborhood. Yes, we know that they're inundated with, with trash pickups because of the storms that we had, but if you have a concern about anything in your department, in your neighborhood, then by all means, call. And I'm gonna say, special edition, why don't you call me, because we would, we would get involved, and I think every councilman here will want to know, you know, if you have a specific problem in your department, in, in your community. So keep us informed as to what your concerns are about what's going on in the city. Buster Porch, you know, had jazz at the waterfall this, this past summer. I don't know where we are on that, but we'll be getting with him to see when we'll start striking that back up. It was noon. Lunch with Buster at the waterfall, he played some beautiful jazz, so we'll see where we are on that program to start that back up again. The weather's pretty, and, and we'll look forward to something happening downtown with that. Thank you.
The, the fines is $500 to $1,000, and that the difference between those two is at the discretion of the judge. So it might not be a $500. If it was a flagrant, it could be as much as $1,000, so I, we'll see how that turns out next week, I guess. If there's not anything else, I'll entertain motion, we adjourn.
So moved.
Meeting adjourned.
Rightly.